Okay, we're gonna go ahead and begin the work session this evening. Uh, we'll move on to the next one. Father, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you for the blessings you've given us. And we ask you tonight, Father, if you can answer both of us. You guide the recorders as we conduct the city business. Christ can we ask? Amen.
Amen.
Okay, uh, the agenda items that are here tonight. Any questions from any council members concerning the forward for agenda items? Okay, if not, we'll move into the regular council sessions. And the invocation will be given by Councilperson Jones. The pledge will be given by Councilperson Paul.
Dear Lord, I come to you tonight with a humble heart and thank you for the blessings that you've given this city and looking over the state of Alabama and our great country, the United States of America. And as always, I ask you to look over our police department, fire department, public safety workers, and those fighting overseas. And it's in your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge is to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, being no bold business tonight, we're moving on to new business. Resolution number twenty sixteen dash ten dash seventeen dash one. Council endorsement of a land swap between the Emerald County and the city of Wutumpah on City Hall on Hill Street property. You want to read this?
Whereas the city of Wutumpah has authorized the establishment of the Wutumpah Downtown Redevelopment Authority, a public corporation, to assist with the city's effort to revitalize the city of Wutumpah's commercial, downtown, and neighborhood areas. And whereas the county commission of the Emerald County has indicated that it will no longer be used in the former Board of Education Thames Pharmacy Building located on the north corner of the intersection of each Drew Street and Hill Street, and has solicited subpoels for its refurbishment. And whereas it's believed that this presents an opportunity for the city to assist in the acquisition of an asset by the Wutumpah Downtown Redevelopment Authority, which will help the Wutumpah Downtown Redevelopment Authority to support its operations, enable it to begin the process of becoming self-sustaining, and facilitate economic development in the city. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Wutumpah, Alabama, that the city supports the idea of negotiating with the Emerald County Commission for the potential swap in conveyance of a county's property known as the Emerald County Board of Education Thames Building to the Wutumpah Downtown Redevelopment Authority in exchange for the city's undeveloped lot identified as the original lot, two forty-one, of the town of Wutumpah, which is located on the east side of Hill Street. Approved and adopted.
Okay, you've heard the reading of the resolution. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Absolutely.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. I have a couple of questions there about this particular resolution. First, I'd like to know, was there a meeting already held in reference to this resolution or presentation made to the county commission?
There was a presentation. I believe David can speak to that issue.
A meeting of who?
Of any city representatives from the city that have become held with the county commission.
Yes, I gave a presentation to the county commission last week, basically laying this proposal out.
Can I ask you, who did you notify or who authorized you to give the presentation to the county commission?
Well, I got permission to the mayor to make the proposal, and I notified Council and Gant the night of the week before last that we would be giving the proposal to the county commission.
Is there a reason why the council as a whole was not notified prior to this presentation?
Well, not to my knowledge, no specific reason. The deadline for us to get any proposal into the county was September thirty. And since we were really just pitching the idea to the commission, to the county commission, just to see if they would even entertain the idea of any sort of swap, I know I certainly didn't feel the need to contact each council member.
Why are we doing this backwards? Really, shouldn't the council have been notified before it being made to the county commission?
No, I think so.
Well, I think he was just, like you said, just letting the idea to see if they were even interested in possibly doing this. You know, it didn't require any official council action at that point. It was just sort of a way of, is this a possibility? Is this something the county would be interested in as far as, you know, the redevelopment authority, presenting why we think the redevelopment authority could utilize that building? So it was more of that kind of thing than it was any, and we told them this was not an official action of the council, that it had not been approved by the council. We were just pitching the idea to them to see if they had any interest whatsoever in basically entering into any negotiations with any sort of exchange for the redevelopment authority to acquire that very important building for the city.
Can I ask who was present at that presentation?
Uh, myself, Lynn Haskett.
And redevelopment authority members, two of those are there.
And Janice Warren, Tucker Robinson, four of them are there.
The obvious problem that I have with this is that apparently there is conversation about this, that in my opinion, should it came before the council, before it was presented to the county commission. Irregardless of what the goals and objectives were, in my opinion, it is disrespectful for me, as an elected official of citizens of this community, to not be notified when there's official business being taken place or a presentation made to another governing body, which all the council members are not notified. It's disrespectful whoever authorized it. Secondly, um, what is the purpose of this? What is the purpose of this? Because I'm in the dark here. So what's the purpose of purchasing this building? What's the purpose of it?
Not a purchase, but the idea is that it will become an asset for the redevelopment authority to generate its own revenue, which will enable it to become self-sustaining. And really, the uses of those funds are limitless. So you would reinvest it into the district either through facade, rehabilitation grants, amenities, all the funds are required to be spent in the redevelopment authority's district. So.
Where are the funds?
Uh, tenants.
To purchase the building?
Well, that's the idea, is that the city is proposing, or I'm suggesting to the council members, that it consider swapping this lot, which is the original lot, two forty-one on Hill Street, with the county for the building. So there would be no city funds involved in any of that position.
Are my fellow council members aware that there's already been a proposal made for the acquisition of the Thames Building? And from my understanding, is the proposal is made by the Dublin House, which also understand there is a will and testament that the only use for that property is for indigent care, I'm sorry, the purpose of serving the indigent. So how is it that the city could possibly make a proposal on something that there's already a hundred-year-old will that says the purpose of that particular property is for indigent? So how are we gonna get around that? What's, I don't understand that. And then certainly, I'm not in support of it. If the will is already in existence to support the indigent, what are we gonna do with the city? What is the Downtown Redevelopment Authority gonna do with it? How's the redevelopment authority gonna use this particular property to support the indigent?
There was a will, a two-lane split, money, and they also have property. They wanted to set up the two-lane legacy, which was to care for the poor in need in the county. And they made a court case that actually interpreted the will because they didn't know if they could actually accept the property in lieu of cash to set up this fund. And the court held, when they reviewed the will, that they could accept the property and use that to generate funds for the two-lane legacy to use for the poor in need. When I looked at the will and I looked at the court order, it was my opinion that the property could be conveyed to some other entity. The only thing is, any proceeds the county gets, or anything they get in exchange for that, would have to be utilized so that it generates funds for this two-lane legacy. At this point, based on my conversations with the county administrator, I do not believe there's a separate fund actually established for the two-lane legacy at this point. In the past, there had been funds that were generated because the building was leased, and I do believe those funds were used for that purpose. However, there's nothing in the will that says the property can't be sold and then the proceeds be utilized for that purpose. It just says that they make this gift so that the poor in need can be taken care of by the county.
So I still don't really understand how the city will generate funds for the indigent. How, how do we want? Okay, so basically what the city is willing to do, a proposal to do, is to totally disregard the will of the two-lane family. Please clear this up for me. Is the city proposing to disregard the will that's over a hundred years old of the two-lane family that has left the legacy to provide funds for the indigent? And is the city willing to make a proposal on that building for what? For the Downtown Redevelopment Authority? I'm still, I need someone to help clear this up.
All right, right now that building is generating those funds.
How the will is existing now, correct?
The will was interpreted by the courts to allow them to make an in-kind contribution of property to be utilized by the county. And one of the things, you know, if they get this property in swap, they would have to use that property to generate funds or to utilize it for the purposes for which it is in the original will, as interpreted by the court. So it's not like they wouldn't be getting anything in exchange. They would. And the problem that the county is under right now is that building is in somewhat disrepair, and they don't want to expend any county funds to renovate the building. So they're willing to do some sort of swap. Either with the Dublin House, give it to them, let them run it and put in investments into the property and bring it back up to the code and all that sort of thing. Or they're willing to possibly, and they haven't told us they will, that they possibly would entertain the idea of doing some sort of swap with the city, as long as we're giving them something in exchange.
Has the Dublin House already made a proposal to the county commission and are prepared to make the upgrade for that particular property? Do we know that?
I wasn't there, but I heard the press, that they had made some sort of proposal.
And if the city were to enter that agreement, what happens to the proposal that the Dublin House has made? What happens to them? We are just gonna swap some lane with you?
It's not, it would not be our decision on which avenue the county would take as to which proposal they would accept. That's up to the county commission. We just want to make a proposal because we are doing this downtown revitalization program. We're gonna expend a lot of money down there to renovate the downtown, and this is on a key corner of our historical downtown that we would like to preserve and be able to develop so that we have economic development on that corner and be good for the city.
So what's the problem with their Dublin House occupying that space?
It's not, there's no, you mean like, do we not want to occupy the space? No, no, my recommendation is, has nothing to do with preventing them from anything. What I saw, because I saw the article in the paper where the Dublin House made their proposal, we had, the city had just been selected as a designated administrative community, and I saw an opportunity to get and have the revenue generating asset for the redevelopment authority. So if the Dublin House would like to go in there at some point, a portion of the building as a rent-paying tenant, that would be fine. What the opportunity here is they can get an asset for the redevelopment authority. Does that make sense? Do you see that as any?
Well, what doesn't make business sense to me is that I don't see why the Dublin House would come in as a tenant to the city when they could possibly.
To redevelopment authority.
Well, to the redevelopment authority and pay rent when they could possibly own the building.
Well, they would, under their proposal, they would lease it.
Right, so that doesn't make sense to me from a business perspective. Why would they pay?
For the adults.
But you're correct, so why would they do that?
Well, I would work for the adults.
But what I, the problem with this whole situation is that we're having a discussion that should have taken place before the proposal was made to the county commission. Therefore, I would have had a chance to do some research, to be more involved in the conversation, and I'm still trying to get my arms wrapped around this role that the redevelopment authority will be involved in this. And if it's a redevelopment authority's effort, how is it that you're making a proposal for the redevelopment authority?
Well, I work closely with the redevelopment authority since they've incorporated, to help get them to go.
Let me mention one other thing. The county had actually a privacy committee on this, more than one occasion, basically wanting us to offer some sort of proposal for that building. And at that time, we were not in a position to do so because we did not have the redevelopment authority. And the city, as you know, is restricted on how it can use its funds and what it can do as far as owning the property and that sort of thing. Where if once we had the redevelopment authority, and we also had the Main Street program going, and we also had the grants for the downtown, it made more sense at that point for us to, once we stepped up to redevelopment authority, to acquire that building. Where before, really, the city had no use for that building because we didn't have the Main Street program, we didn't have all this downtown revitalization going on, and we didn't have the redevelopment authority. So it just wasn't the time and place back then, but it is now, but this is an important thing now, that we see that is a potential that we can add to the county. But it's all for their decisions.
Okay, anyone else have any questions concerning this issue?
I still actually have a final question. So what I'm hearing is, that's why I'm still here, is that, so the redevelopment authority is quasi-involved in this proposal, or this proposal will benefit the redevelopment authority? Am I understanding that correctly? So again, when did the redevelopment authority come before the council or anybody to say, hey, this is something that we want to do? I mean, that's a concern of mine. So that was a concern that I had about the redevelopment authority in the first place without having the opportunity to make an appointment on it. But at the same time, if the redevelopment authority is making presentations, or whoever's making presentations to the county commission, and the council as a whole, which my understanding, we're gonna have to vote on this as an entire council, why didn't we have this conversation before now?
Simply a time, a time issue.
But you guys had time to notify other council members, I mean, other council members who were present?
I think that, yeah, for a day.
Okay. I possibly could have been present at that.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, anyone? Yes, sir.
I have met with the Dublin House, exactly, and of course, from my years of being here, there's two things here, no matter which way, either this county commission or the new county commission, any county commission votes, the city of Wutumpah is gonna come out of here, because of what it is, it may not be exactly what we have for Main Street. I'd ask, there's people here from the Dublin House, and I'd like to request your comments if they say something, if they have something to say. Just wants, after the minutes, you know, to do this because, you know, if they get a chance, I would like, you know, just hope that we don't.
So we have a motion, we have a second, we have a discussion.
Councilmember Robbins?
Yes.
Gill?
No, the reason being that was not a modern initiative, so.
Thornton?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
So that resolution has been approved. Out of two, the re-permission to purchase from the state via NJPA National John Powell's House must call field lighting for the football soccer fields at the Dr. Neil K. Junior Multicultural Center, which has a sports complex, not to exceed one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Come back on the other end.
We have a motion? So we have a motion, we have a second, we have a discussion.
Councilmember Robbins?
Yes.
Gill?
No, the reason being that was not a modern initiative, so.
Thornton?
Yes.
No.
Thornton?
Yes.
Gant?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
So that resolution has been approved. Out of two, the re-permission to purchase from the state via NJPA National John Powell's House must call field lighting for the football soccer fields at the Dr. Neil K. Junior Multicultural Center, which has a sports complex, not to exceed one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Come back on the other end.
We have a motion?
That is three.
That is a first.
Yesterday, I actually spent a lot of time with the English and order these, and it's under, it's on the NJPA, so it's, it's just, they asked that you come forward, councilman, or they order.
Okay, councilman, would you like to, your motion, use your motion to suspend rules?
Yes.
Okay, and do we have a second to suspend rules?
Second.
So, all in favor, suspend, roll call.
Councilmember Robbins?
Yes.
Gill?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Gant?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Okay, rules haven't been suspended. Now we'll entertain a motion to move ahead for this provision.
Second.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, let me know, say an aye?
Aye.
You don't want to oppose? Okay, so that too has been approved. Out of three, permission to be an installation of the field lighting for the football soccer fields at the Dr. Neil K. Junior Multicultural Center, which has a sports complex.
Second.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Senate. Do we have a second, man?
Yes, I'm ready.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Do we? Do you have a idea how it will affect the installation of lights?
Oh, the preliminary quote I got when he said, when he told me what the lighting was, was six weeks. But the reason we want to go ahead, we got to order the lighting, it's ordered for specification. So in the time we order the lighting, we're also gonna be in the installation. And hopefully, we can get, by the time the lights get here, we can be ready to put them in. It'll be up to the contractor and lighting firm how long. I think on the last fields, we had, I think we had sixty days on them, but there were four lights, so. To answer your question, I can't answer your question.
You satisfied with that?
Oh, yes. About six weeks is what he told me.
About the same way as parking.
Yes.
Out of motion, we have a second, we have a discussion. All in favor, let me know, say an aye?
Aye.
You don't want to oppose? Okay, so that permission installation has been granted. Out of four, Gold Star Park Commission for exclusive use for order of a summer run that will be twenty-fifth, twenty-seventeen. The address?
Aye. Thank you all for your time. It's that time of year again when we start preparing for our annual parade, this will be the fifth parade, we've had so far for the quarter of summer run, and it generates some revenue for the city. We have twenty-five hundred to three thousand attendees every year, and we're just asking for permission to use Gold Star Park that day, exclusive use that day.
Meaning you won't block it off, right?
Yes, sir. And I promise you, the sales tax will be collected that day.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is what she does. She collects sales tax. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And do we have a motion to move forward for this?
Second.
Second. We have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, let me know, say an aye?
Aye.
Okay. You want to oppose? So that too has been approved. Boards and committees, Chamber of Commerce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Two things real quick. I am both happy and sad to announce that the Haunted History Door is completely sold out. Over four hundred tickets, fifteen to four hundred, fifteen to four hundred, forty dollars each. So you're gonna have a lot of people coming downtown at the end of the month. That's good news. Secondly, we have a ribbon-cutting and open house on Saturday at eleven a.m. at the B&amp;B Health Boutique, which is diagonal to the Chamber of Commerce. We're very excited about this business opening its doors. It provides a very unique service to particularly cancer survivors. They are unique geographically in that there's just not many businesses that provide a service as they do, so we'll have people consequently coming all over the Alabama, Central Alabama region to buy products. So if you are around town, they are gonna have some light snacks and stuff on Saturday at eleven a.m. during the countdown there in the month ahead.
Yeah, I'm having trouble spitting with the tea.
Are you on UTF, can you eat, Mr. Mayor?
You are. Okay, thank you for that report. Any comments from our citizens tonight? Motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Here I am here, back to the bathroom house. There's nobody to go, I've been trying this for eight years, so I just want y'all to pitch. But if y'all ask me, I can see twenty out of the picture. You know, they got one. This is what I look at every morning when I get out of my house. So it's quite chill for eight years, I've been trying. Eight years, I've been trying. Eight years. Eight years, I've been trying to get the door of the bathroom house, oh, my sweetie. Every morning, that's what I look at. Eight years that I've been trying. So now, you're trying, so we have a hundred and twenty days, right? How many days was since the, uh, uh, building permit was done? How long that been?
When we left this last meeting, I asked you to come by the office and let's look at it. You didn't come by this, I can't answer that. I have a pile of.
You have a pile of, so it's been over, you said a hundred and twenty days from the last night I was here?
It's a hundred and eighty days.
Hundred and eighty days. So we did a hundred and eighty days. I just want y'all to see what I've been trying to do. I can't understand, this is a powerful struggle, about eight years, four weeks ago, about four hours ago, you just come up and get a building permit. The baby's all over the place, and you're gone. Would you like to see that in front of your house every morning when you come out your door? I'm listening to you.
Right.
Would you want to see that picture in front of your house when you throw it every day? Can?
I'm listening.
I'm listening. Would you, I'd see that, Mr. Gordon, every morning when you come out your door? No, you don't. Steve? Huh?
Absolutely not.
No, please, help me.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a comment, sir.
Yes, sir, would you state your name?
Anna Johnson, seven eighteen River Oaks Court, District Four, Councilman Ginn. How you doing, sir?
Just fine.
Ladies and gentlemen, council, I was here a couple of weeks ago, and I asked about the RDA that was being ratified, put in place. Listening to the dialogue this evening, just got a question as to the RDA's authority. I was under impression, based off of the comments that were made two weeks ago, that the RDA was going to be the agency or the office authority that enters into contracts on behalf of the city, so that it didn't have to come before this council meeting. Yet, when I was listening to the dialogue tonight, the city determined working hand-in-hand with the RDA. So if you could just help me understand how we work in the RDA versus what we're doing at the council level?
Well, I think, you know, for those of you who don't know, my name's David Robinson, I'm the city planning and program director. When I came on board in twenty thirteen, I worked with the city to adopt the twenty-fourteen downtown and riverfront revitalization plan.
Yes, sir.
Since then, I have worked with several agencies at the state level, including Aldott and this for Montgomery Metropolitan Planning Organization, to manage federal transportation rent. So we've got almost two million dollars in federal transportation rent dollars lined up to actually implement the downtown riverfront revitalization plan. I also, with the assistance of the Economic Development Director and several people downtown, including Johnny Odes, although he's not downtown, Dennis Fane, Coach Madaloni, and Peter Fers, incorporating at the time, it was Coach, Johnny, and Troy.
Troy Stowe.
Troy Stowe, owner of Free Up. Troy Stow, owner of Free Up. So I worked with all those folks to get this city selected as a designated ministry community. I wrote the application. I wrote the script for that video that everybody's seen, if you've seen it, downtown, the old tentative video. So in my capacity as a administrative officer for the city, that's what I feel my job is, is to reach out to any agency that I can work with to implement the plans that are adopted by the planning commission and the plans that are adopted by the city. So if I see an opportunity for one of these agencies, if I see an opportunity for us to leverage one of these agencies, whether it's local, state, or federal, that's what I'm going to do. Now, obviously, the council, as Mr. Councilman Gill pointed out, the council has two free loss miniature funds and any major action, but up until that point, that's how they're all working together, more or less through me, because I pick up the phone and make the call.
So procedurally, Mr. Robinson, based on what I see here tonight, and, and what Mr. Greer proposed in new business number two, it's kind of how it's supposed to go, i.e. you bring it to the council, they turn it in motion, follow, grant it, we're going to do it, it's passed. Procedurally, it's kind of how we're supposed to do it, even after you go out and lobby on behalf of the city with other agencies from local, state, or federal government?
That's right.
Procedurally?
Yeah.
Okay.
If the council is authorizing the signature money?
Which is?
I'm sorry.
If the council is being required to authorize the signature money or approve some action that's specific, the council's going to be.
So he does have the independent authority then to be, as you said earlier, to just go out and seek these local to federal agencies?
Support grants.
Support, grants, and then bring it to the council?
That's correct.
With, with, with certain bodies of the council being privy to it and certainly not being privy to it? Is that what we're saying?
No, it has to be submitted to the entire council because the entire council has to act as a unit?
Agreed.
In order to approve or take any official action, whether they discuss it with an individual council member or someone in the city, that doesn't do it. As far as any official action has to be taken, it has to go before the entire council.
Got it. And then lastly, with the RDA, have we, since it's a ratified organization, it's already been established, assuming, in, by law, is there, is there any, what's, what's, what's the rules then looking to add in diversity to the current board of directors? Is there, is there a thing in place that we're looking at? Because the three persons that you all told me two, two weeks ago that were on it, of course, is not representative of the fabric of the, of the city. And since we are doing this based on what you said, Mr. Robinson, to bring a holistic approach to the city, seems like to me that directors on that board should look like the fabric of our community.
Why the difference between the boards?
Well, and are you, are you aware of the difference between the mainstream and the top? So, uh, the, the board members that are the petition, the city council?
Non-profit organization that is acting, based on what you told me two weeks ago, acting on behalf of the city.
It's two different associations, two different boards we're talking about here. The redevelopment authority is something that is spearheaded by individuals in the community to come up and ask the council to appoint or establish, allow them to establish this public corporation.
Yeah.
And then you've got the downtown group, which is a nonprofit that was established to run the Main Street program. And they have reached out to all the community because we are desperately in need of people from across the community to volunteer, because there's four major committees that are very, that need to be very active in setting this plan into action. And so that's where we've asked, we've asked the people, we've asked for names, and we've had a public meeting, and so far, we've got less than twenty people that I think have signed up to be volunteers for the Main Street program.
And I understand. I, I guess for me, what becomes convoluted is when you break both of these entities together and say you're acting on behalf of the city, whether it's Main Street or RDA, that's when it becomes convoluted. Because what you're saying is, on one side, I got a board of directors that does this, and on the other side, we got a board of directors doing this, but when I listen to Mr. Robinson, all of these entities kind of wrote your hand in there.
On some project. Well, they, if they want to.
Okay.
Uh, yeah. And right now, there are no projects, so there's not a, uh, downtown.
All right. Thank you. Okay, young lady, you raise your hand, or you state your name?
Sure. Can I, can I do it from here or?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So my name is Hannah Powell, and I work at the Dalton House, and I know there are many people who may not know what the Dalton House does, but we're a children's home, we care for inmates' children, and we've been here in this community for, for many years. My family moved here from Scotland in nineteen eighty-seven to be, to begin prison ministry and that, and Dalton House came out of that. So there's just a little bit of history on who we are. We care for hundreds of children, not just from Montana, but across the state and neighboring states. So I have here in my hand the, uh, the deed for the board, old Board of Education Building and the Tamis Pharmacy, which is the building that we hope to acquire, and, um...
Ma'am, let me, let me stop you just one second. If this gets back into action, just taken in this meeting, we can't rehash that because that has already taken place.
Right, but this.
So the question is what she answered about the deed and the use of the property and all of that, if this is, you want to challenge that or whatever, we cannot get back into that because action has already been taken on this issue.
I just had a question.
Okay.
I had a question. Yes. So my question is, because the deed that the two-lane family left said that the building's to be used for the express and singular uses for charity for the poor and those who are destitute in an absolute need, which we wouldn't have to reinterpret that for a Dalton House, that would, that would fit our purposes. So my question just, I guess for the council would be, how are the destitute and the needy,[1761.41]